Good morning. I'd like to call the January 2, 2019 Jackson County Border Commissioner Organizational Meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do flag.
I will now call the roll. Mr. Walls?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy?
President and the audience.
Mr. Duckham? Mr. Shotwell?
Here.
Mr. Tompkins?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney? Mr. Williams?
President.
Mr. Elwell? Right, we have a call. We are now to approval of the agenda and entertain a motion.
Second.
Any additions or corrections or deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We are now to public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to make public comment? Alright, seeing none, public comment is now closed. We are to administration of the oath of office, so we'll go to the podium for that. Okay, if you could all stand, please, and raise your right hand. All commissioners. You do soundly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of County Commissioner according to the best of your ability. Thank you. Nope, that's my part. Just above your name. Thank you. Alright, we are to item five, adopt resolution 01-19.1, chair to serve one-year term. Entertain a motion?
So move.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Alright. Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Alright, motion carries. We are now to election of the chairperson. Are there any nominations from the floor?
Madam Chair, I nominate Commissioner Shotwell.
Alright, thank you. There any other nominations? Alright, hearing none. All those in favor of electing Commissioner Shotwell as chairperson? Opposed? Congratulations, Commissioner Chairman Shotwell. You're welcome.
Thought about saying a few words, but the few words are done, and let's get started with our business at hand for the county. I'd like to nominate the vice-chairperson of the county at this time. Entertain nominations from the floor. Do you have a second? Any other nominations? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Welcome aboard, Dave. At this time, we will have the new three committees, Public Safety and Transportation, General Government, and Human Services. Public Safety and Transportation will be chaired by Commissioner David, by Vice Chairman Commissioner David Elwell, Vice Chair Tony Bear, Phil Duckham, Rodney Walls, and Darius Williams will make up that committee. General Government chaired by Phil Duckham, Vice Chair by Rodney Walls, Alan Tompkins, Daniel Mahoney, and Corey Kennedy will make up that committee. Human Services Chairman Alan Tompkins, Vice Chairman Daniel Mahoney, Tony Bear, Corey Kenny and Kennedy, and Darius Williams will make up that committee. These are the standing committees for the county for the year 2019-2020. Entertain a motion to approve? Have a motion in support. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Duly carried. Commission appointments to other boards and committees. There appears to be nothing on the board docs. I do not. At this time, we have an opening on the airport board. Previous commissioner was Carl Rice Jr. You'll be completing his term of 2020. Entertain nominations from the floor? This is a nine, Phil? The third Wednesday after the board meeting at the airport at 9:00 a.m. Myself and Commissioner Walls are members at this time.
Right after the main commission meeting.
Yeah, next day after. Entertain a nomination of Phil Duckham. Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. The seat on the Board of Public Works currently seated is Commissioner Phil Duckham. The Chair would like to nominate Phil Duckham to serve in that position until 2022, or as long as he's willing to serve, I should say. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. Agriculture Preservation Committee. It's an indefinite assignment. Sarah Lightner is the previous commissioner. Entertain nominations from the floor? Rodney Walls has agreed to serve. Is there anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. Emergency Management Advisory. Commissioner member. Serves until April of 2019. It's vacant at this time. Seeing nor hearing none, we'll continue to let that one carry forward. Yes, sir. Thank you. We have a nomination of Commissioner Darius Wal- Williams? Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. Food Protection Hearing Board. Serves from now till 1 of 2021. Previous Commissioner Carl Rice Jr. Is there any commissioner to be nominated? I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a clarification from the administrator. Does that person need to serve on the Human Services Board or not? Because the Human Services Board was originally the Healthcare Board, and it's designated as the ones that's in charge of food and the Health Department. Okay, at this time, we have a nomination of Commissioner Walls, as long as he meets the qualifications after clarification. All in favor? Those opposed? Duly carried. There's another commissioner's seat? Anyone willing to serve? Hearing none. The Land Bank Authority had a commissioner member served by John Williams. Anyone willing to serve? A nomination for Darius Williams? Any other commissioners? Phil? That's Commissioner Kennedy's prerogative, sir. Just as it is Commissioner Mahoney's prerogative to not be here. So neither of them are effectively commissioners at this time. Now, there's a lot of vacant seats that are carrying forward that will do on our Tuesday night meeting, and at that time, hopefully commissioners will have been willing to step up and serve the community. Yes, sir? Not at this time because they are not sworn commissioners. So back to Darius Williams, Commissioner for the Land Bank Authority. We have a nomination in support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Skip over Leoni DDA because we don't know what's going on in Leoni with the DDA at this time. Judges' Meeting. The Chairman of Agencies and Affairs previously, is it the new Public Safety and Transportation Chair, sir? The Judges' Meeting. The commissioner who served on that was the Chairman of County Agencies and Affairs. County Agencies and Affairs does not exist. Is that now the Chair of Public Safety and Transportation? That means Vice Chairman David Elwell is the nominee. Is there support? We have support? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. We're arriving at the Parks and Fair Board. This is a newly combined board where we're going to continue with the current commissioners. No, sir. We have three positions and three commissioners currently serving. Commissioner, myself, on the Parks Board would like to continue serving. Entertain a nomination from someone, please. We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have a second seat for 2021, currently occupied by Daniel Mahoney. Any nominations from the floor? We have a current seat, seeing none. We have a current seat open, excuse me, with Commissioner Member Phil Duckham for 2022. Commissioner Duckham, are you willing to serve? Are you stepping down? Yes. We have an open seat on that. Is there any nominations from the floor? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? We have Darius Williams and Tony Bear. The Chair would like to nominate Rodney Walls. Adam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Bear? Commissioner Walls?
Walls.
Mr. Duckham? Mr. Tompkins?
Walls.
Mr. Williams?
Williams.
Mr. Elwell?
Walls.
Chairman Shotwell?
Walls.
Walls has four.
That's not enough. You're gonna have to take Bear and Walls, because you're gonna have five votes of those elected and seated.
Alright.
So Commissioner Williams will drop off, and Bear and Walls will stand for nomination. Adam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Walls?
Walls.
Mr. Duckham?
Walls.
Mr. Tompkins?
Walls.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Elwell?
Walls.
Mr. Bear? Chairman Shotwell?
Walls.
Six for Walls.
Six for Walls. Congratulations, Rodney.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can we go back and potentially fill that middle seat now?
I would love to.
And I would nominate Daniel Mahoney.
Yes, well, we're gonna have to swim in first. Do you mind, Madam Clerk?
Nope, not at all.
Certainly. Vice Chairman Elwell, you had a comment? The Parks Fair Board seat that expires 2021, Daniel Mahoney is the nominee. Any other nominees from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. We're now at the Planning Commission. There's an open seat for a commissioner. John Williams is a previous commissioner. Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, we'll carry it over till the, till the January meeting. Region Two, area on aging. Commission member, 2019, four of 2019 is when that expires. Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none. Region Two Planning Commission. Currently, there are one, two, three vacant seats.
Mr. Chair, I'd volunteer for one of them. Maybe John Williams's seat expiring in 2021.
Thank you, Dave. You are there until 2022. You can't leave. Okay? So we have two nominations and three open seats. Is there another commissioner that would like to serve? Seeing nor hearing none, we'll take those two nominations and close the floor at this time. Do I have seconds for those two?
Seven.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. Michigan Works Southeast. Current Commissioner Daniel Mahoney serves till 2021. Commission Member Sarah Lightner's seat is vacant. Is there a commissioner that would like to serve on Michigan Works? Okay. We have, Darius Williams has put forward his name and nomination. Is there support? Any questions? Anyone else like to be nominated? All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Congratulations. Sanitary Code Board of Appeals. We're looking for a lead commissioner and an alternate. Carl Rice Jr. was the lead commissioner. Daniel, are you willing to be the lead commissioner?
I'm sorry.
Sanitary Code Board of Appeals. You've served in the past?
Yep.
Okay, we'll make you the, happily make you the lead, and we're looking for an alternate commissioner. Anyone interested? All in favor of Daniel Mahoney being the Sanitary Board of Appeals Commissioner, please say aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. My most favorite committee, the Street Naming and Addressing Committee. Does that have a member, Mr. Administrator? Thank you. Who's available Thursday evenings for dinner with the supervisors? Once a month. Please get with me, and we'll bring that forward on Tuesday night. Traffic Safety Program. Yes, sir? For?
Supervisors.
That's not a nomination. That's a Chair's appointment. But I'll take that under advisement, Rodney, and I'll talk about it. Traffic Safety Program. Previous Commissioner Sarah Lightner. Is that program going forward in this budget year?
No, it's on hiatus. Frankly, they don't have any funds currently, so they were kinda planning to save us some money, and when they have money, go ahead and, the board still exists, but...
Do we need to appoint a commissioner?
I would.
Is there any commissioner willing to serve on the Traffic Safety Program? I will happily serve. Any other nominations? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. That completes at this time the current commissioner... Yes, sir. Now, we have a vacant seat still there. Would you like to serve? We have a nomination for Darius Williams to serve on Region Two Planning. Any other commissioners? Seeing nor hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Congratulations. Thank you for stepping up, Commissioner. Back to where I was. Commissioner Board and Appointments for January 2019. All the vacant seats shall carry forward to our regularly scheduled business meeting Tuesday night. If you have questions about any of these committees, please don't hesitate to meet with Mr. Overton and get your questions answered. Onto item 10. For the meeting schedule and study session draft option. Yes, sir. Mr. Administrator? I have, I have an idea, but I want to hear what you say.
It's, at the bottom of that, there, it shows that asterisk. Those are exceptions. So, you know, everybody knows when we normally meet, so she puts an asterisk when she has changed the meeting to a different date. That's what that reflects. Remember, we generally have, well, almost always, we have a three-meeting study session, then we have committees, and then we have our evening meeting.
In August, so both my chief deputy and I can attend a conference.
Any further questions or clarifications? The motion is to adopt the current schedule as printed for the meeting cycle for this year. Moved by Commissioner Duckham, supported by Commissioner Bear. Posting it?
I can.
Cool. I'm a yes.
Okay.
Are you a yes, Daniel? Adopt Resolution 01-19.2 to waive the administrative fee and interest, interest for senior citizens. We have a motion in support. Any questions? Seeing nor hearing none. Would you please post the vote?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
The vote should be appearing on your computer in front of you. Here is a roll call. Yes or no? Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Appoint the Administrator Controller as the Freedom of Information Officer as required by state statute. We have support? We have support, lucky you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. The approved Attorney List, any questions? We have a motion and second, all in favor, please say aye. Those opposed? Duly carried. Adoption of Board Rules.
Just as a point of clarification, it's just reconfirming them, there's no changes, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I think you had a motion and I'll support it.
We have a motion and support. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. We've arrived at the second opportunity for public comment. Please step up to the microphone, sir, and identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Commissioner-elect Kennedy, and I wanted to give everyone an explanation today as why I'm not being sworn in. Some of you might have been following what's going on in Leoni Township, but we got quite a contentious situation going on, there's a couple loose ends that need to be wrapped up, which I anticipate will be done the next meeting on the 8th. I've already submitted my resignation, which will be effective the 14th, so I could take my seat for the meeting on the 15th. I just wanted all the commissioners to be aware, and also apologize that I couldn't take my seat today.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Commissioner comments? Seeing none? Yes, sir? No, you can.
Can you hear me now? Okay, well, again, good morning, I count it as a privilege and an honor to be able to serve, uh, this 8th District, um, this is certainly, um, a step outside of what would be my normal comfort zone, but in order to be able to, uh, to effectively grow and to expand and do great things, you have to be able to get uncomfortable sometimes, and so this certainly does that, uh, but again, I am really excited, I'm thankful for this opportunity, and I promise to do everything, uh, within, uh, my rights as commissioner to effectively serve and to do, uh, what needs to be done, and I hope that we can continue to, uh, work together, that we would not focus on the letter, uh, that we represent, uh, but we would focus on the needs of the county and do what is, what's best for them. Thank you for the opportunity.
Tony, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, I wanna thank my constituents in the five townships for putting me in this position, I've been looking forward to this, I think I'm gonna enjoy this position, uh, I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and, uh, taking care of the county residents, thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? This time, we are adjourned until the start of study session. At 9:00 a.m.